I'd like to call to order the Water Works Board meeting for Wednesday, January 18th, 2022 at 7:06 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with all the great and just justice.
Thank you. Sorry, Rob.
No, that's okay.
I can do that for you.
Yeah, that was nice of you. Thank you.
I didn't know.
So we all, you know, we all share things, so.
We had a little mix up there, ladies and gentlemen, on our, on our new chairman for this year.
Anyway, the Water Board consists of three members, myself, Councilwoman Robin Arvinaitis, and Councilman Kevin Conley. So we'll take, well, we didn't do the roll call yet, so let's do the roll call.
Yes, Mr. President, Councilman Rob Getzloff.
Present.
Councilwoman Robin Arvinaitis.
Here.
Councilman Kevin Conley.
Present.
Councilman Caleb Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Thomas Schmidt.
Here.
Attorney David Austin.
Present.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson.
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief David Meyer.
Here.
Police Chief Pete Sormas.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Steve McNamara. Park Superintendent John Novasich. IT Robbie Hanson. NICE Engineering Mike Helmut. Public Works Director Chad Nandorf.
Here.
Director of Operations Andy Hansen. Town Manager Jim Gorman.
Here.
Recording Secretary Robin Teal. Clerk Treasurer Michael Troxel, here.
Thank you. Minutes of the December 14th, 2022, and December 26th, 2022, public meetings. Pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries three zero. Any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Pleasure of the board.
Move to approve claims.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries three zero. Any reports, Mr. Gorman?
Reports.
Any reports from council members?
No reports.
Okay. There is no old business or no new business for all, so I will take any business from the floor regarding Water Works, any business from the floor regarding Water Works, any business from the floor regarding Water Works. Hearing none in this meeting is adjourned. We'll move into redevelopment. Call to order the Redevelopment Commission meeting for Wednesday, January 18th, 2023. The time is 7:09 PM. The Redevelopment Commission is comprised of the entire council, so I'll add council members Caleb Johnson and Tom Schmidt, and also our advisor from the Lake Central School Board, Nicole Kelly, to our roll call. Hello, Nicole. Minutes of the December 14th, 2022, and December 26th, 2022, public meetings.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Five zero. Claims, Mr. Troxel? Any additional?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Any reports from staff on redevelopment?
Yes, Mr. President, I do have a quick report on 22 West Joliet, which is the property just to the west of Town Hall. We are currently in front of the Planning Commission. We just attended a study session. That is currently a six-lot parcel, six lots over there. We're going to turn it into a single-lot subdivision, and we were appearing in front of the Planning Commission first Monday in February to look for approval on that subdivision.
Good news.
And it's actually for future economic development.
At that point, we'll be ready to go out for bid after that?
No, we're going to go through the subdivision process first.
Okay.
And then, and then we got to go through the second process after that, so.
Very good.
We're, we're close, but it's going to take a little bit of time.
Good progress. Thanks, Mr. Gorman.
You're welcome.
Any other reports from staff? Council members?
None. No report.
Thank you. Okay. We have no old business. We have no new business. Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor? Quiet group. Any business from the floor? Hearing none in this meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Utility Board meeting, Wednesday, January 18th, 2023, at 7:11. The roll call remains the same as the previous meeting of the Redevelopment Board. So first on the agenda would be the minutes of the December 14th, 2022, and December 26th, 2022, public meetings.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next on the agenda would be claims. Are there any additional claims?
No additional claims, Madam President.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next, we have reports. Do we have any staff reports regarding the Utility Board?
No reports.
No reports? Any council member reports?
None.
None.
There is no old business. There is no new business. Is there any business from the floor regarding the Utility Board? Any business from the floor? Seeing and hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Town Council meeting for Wednesday, January 18th, at approximately 7:12 PM. The roll call will stay the same as the, as the Utility Board. First item on the agenda tonight is the minutes of the December 14th and December 26th public meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Motion to approve claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on claims. I did have one question before we move on, and maybe Andy and Chad can answer this. The payment, item G, is that the last payment from 2022 for the paving?
That's the first payment for the 2022-1 CCMG.
That.
Because they did Eagle Ridge Drive, Chilling Drive.
That was the work that was done already?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. We have a second on claims. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Reports. We'll start to the left. Mr. Patterson, Chief Patterson from the Fire Department.
No reports.
Assistant Chief Dave Meyer.
Nothing to report.
Police Chief Pete Sormas.
Deputy Chief has a report for you.
Deputy Chief Steve McNamara.
We just want to let you guys know that we have two of our new officers starting on Monday at nine o'clock in the morning swearing at the town court. Everyone's invited to go. They're Mersey hires, and so they're going to start FTO immediately after that, so just wanted to let everyone know that.
Steve, excuse me, I couldn't hear you real well. Did you say Monday, Monday morning?
Monday morning at nine o'clock at the town court.
Thank you. Superintendent. From the parks.
No report.
Our engineering, NICE engineering, Mike.
No report.
Our new Public Works Director, Chad Nandorf.
No report.
Our Operation Manager, Andy Hansen.
No reports.
And our Town Manager, Jim Gorman.
No reports.
Thank you. Any reports from council members?
No.
No report.
Not at this time.
No reports. Next item is public comments from the public on agenda items. Is there any public comments on agenda items from the audience? No public comments. We'll move right, right into old business. First item is item A is Resolution 22-18, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, established in a municipal riverfront development project area in the Town of Shererville, designating the boundaries thereof and all matters related thereto. This has been deferred from the December 14th, 2022 meeting. Mr. Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution is actually establishing a municipal riverfront district. This could allow for new economic development in our downtown. We did, we did alter the map from, that's why it was deferred. We did alter the map from our last meeting at your direction. It is up on the board right now. The purple area is the riverfront district, which is basically 1,500 feet on each side of our Shererville ditch, which is in the blue. And this will allow us to obtain liquor licenses for new businesses coming into town in this designation. This is the first step of many for this. This is just establishing the district. There's a, there's a lot more involved, and we'll get to those at other meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman. Pleasure of the board.
Mr. Gorman, I would ask, maybe we can explain how that process will work once the program is in place.
Sure. The liquor licenses, it's basically for restaurants that come into our downtown. They would still go through the process of applying for liquor license through the ATC, Alcohol Tobacco Commission, and they will issue, they will issue the licenses, but we will have the opportunity to approve those establishments on, on the board level here to make sure that's, that's what we want coming into town, that type of establishment. But it's mainly meant for restaurants.
So if I understand correctly, the license has to stay at that address. It cannot be moved in that address.
That is correct. And if you have.
If the business closed, the liquor license goes away with the business, and any new business going into that same space would have to.
That is correct, and we would, we would retain that license.
Okay.
You know, because you only issued a certain amount of licenses for this district. We don't know what that number is. They threw out 10, but I'm not really sure how, how the, the state does that. And from my understanding, if you're already in, if you're in an existing, if you own an existing liquor license, three-way license in this district, you cannot apply for one. But there's, I need a little clarity on that.
Unless you're opening a new business.
Exactly correct. Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jim. Were you going to say something?
No.
Okay. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-18.
Second.
Caleb.
We have a motion. We have a second on Resolution 2022-18. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. We'll move into new business. First item on the agenda for new business is item A, ordinance 1989B. An ordinance amending Town 2023 Salary Ordinance Number 1989 regarding the salaries and wages for officials and employees of the Town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, and repealing all town ordinance or parts thereof in conflict here within. Mr. Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. President. This amendment to the salary ordinance was due to, we were adding two positions in the Building and Planning Department, a building inspector and a building inspector one. Our building commissioner retired, and we hired a new building inspector, so he will, once he gets certified and, and familiar with town codes and, and state codes, he will, he will move in to a building inspector position from a building inspector one, and then eventually, once he gets commercial, his commercial certifications, he will move into the building commissioner role, rather than having him come in cold, go right into the building commissioner role.
Thank you.
Mr. President, motion to approve ordinance 1989B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Motion to adopt ordinance number 1989B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item B is consider acceptance of the attorney contract between Burke, Constanz, and Carberry and the Town of Shererville.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the yearly contract between the town and Burke, Constanz, and Carberry. They, they represent us on the Planning Commission, the BZA, the Board of Safety, and the Park Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman. We have a motion on the floor, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item C, consider acceptance of attorney contract between Austin, Kiper, and Gysitis, PC, and the Town of Shererville. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is similar to the one we just voted on and approved between the town and Austin, Kiper, and Gysitis, our attorneys.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Item D, consider approval to purchase property located at 543 and 545 Kennedy Avenue, Shererville, Indiana, from the Bertino Property Manager LLC in the amount of $210,000, and to authorize the Town Manager, Director of Operations, the Clerk Treasurer, and Town Attorney to finalize the execution of documents. And this has to do with our Kennedy Avenue Extension Project. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is known as Parcel Six of Phase One of the Trax Project, which is where the bridge will be going over the tracks just north of here. This, this property in particular is located on the north side of the tracks, east side of Kennedy Avenue. There's, down in your agendas, there's three more properties similar to this one that we need to purchase for them in order for them to put the bridge in. And this is an Indot project. Indot is actually buying these properties on our behalf, and we, we ended up getting a grant from them for, for this project. So these next four are still part of Phase One Trax Project.
Thank you for the report. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Item E is consider approval to purchase property located at 600 Kennedy Avenue, Shererville, Indiana, from the RDM Number Three LLC in the amount of $22,500, and to authorize the Town Manager, Director of Operations, and Clerk Treasurer, and Town Attorney to finalize the execution of documents. Once again, this is the Kennedy Avenue Extension.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this one is identified as Parcel Number Four. It is located on the north side of the tracks. This one is on the west side of Kennedy. This is right by Underground Pipe and Valve. It's, it's just right-of-way. That's why the price is a little bit cheaper than that first one.
I was going to ask, Mr. Gorman, is the, the $210,000 that we're spending on 543, 545 Kennedy Avenue, and these other ones that are, that are larger, we're purchasing the whole property, and we had to purchase the whole property instead of just a right-of-way?
Yes, we did have to purchase the whole property. And it's actually, it will become right-of-way. It'll be a, a larger right-of-way because we end up, there's a business, existing business that's right on, right next to the tracks, and we have to give them an access road where these properties are being purchased from.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Further discussion? None. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item F, consider approval to purchase property located at 497 Kennedy Avenue, Shererville, Indiana, from Ryan Brooks and Sarah Trevino in the amount of $173,000, and to authorize the Town Manager, Director of Operations, Clerk Treasurer, and Town Attorney to finalize the execution of documents. Once again, this has to do with the Kennedy Avenue Extension. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. This parcel is known as Parcel Number Nine. It is located on the north side of the tracks and on the east side of Kennedy Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any, motion and a second. Any discussion?
No.
No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item G, consider approval to purchase property located at 531 Kennedy Avenue, Shererville, Indiana, from Harold B. and Kelly M. Grabinski in the amount of $166,000, and to authorize the Town Manager, Director of Operations, Treasurer, and Town Attorney to finalize the execution of documents. This also, once again, is, has to do with the Kennedy Avenue Extension. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. This parcel is known as Parcel Number Seven, and is also located on the north side of the tracks, east side of Kennedy Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Nope.
No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Before we move on, can I just say, Mr. Gorman, just for future reference, if we're going through this, and I, I don't need to know every detail, but for the public's purposes, it might be beneficial to have maybe a map up on our screen, just so that we have, you know, you have the parcels numbered. I assume it's from a map, so there, there's something to reference.
Sure.
Maybe we can have that for us for future purposes, and, and be able to look at them, know where we're talking about, and the public can see that as well.
Yeah, actually, we can show you right now.
Sounds good. Sorry.
Just going to take a minute to load here. So the ones that Andy said are the ones that were on the agenda tonight. You can see the three on the east side of Kennedy, and then you can see that one yellow one at the bottom to the left. That's the right-of-way over by Underground Pipe and Valve.
The right are proposed? Okay.
And where, what is that, is that a right-of-way that, that's carved out from the end of that cul-de-sac over to Kennedy Avenue? What is that? Okay. An error by the county? What? Never.
Those are also going to be right-of-way.
And when we're done acquiring these parcels, that, that's planned to happen all in 2023, and then construction starts 2024?
That's the plan. I think they just moved, they just moved it up or back another six months. We just heard from Indot.
Tell them we said no.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Andy, for doing it. We'll move on to item H is considered a reimbursement for continuing education completed and passed by the Clerk Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, our Clerk Treasurer is looking to get reimbursed for continuing education that he does. He is an elected official, so he does not follow our personnel policy, and we reimburse our employees for continuing education, so he's requesting that. We have done so in the past with our previous Clerk Treasurer, so he's looking for your consideration tonight to, to reimburse him for his continuing education.
Questions, Mr. President?
Yes.
These are college courses that you're intending to take?
Yes, Councilman. These are college courses. They're online courses from Indiana University. They're in government finance and accounting, public finance and budgeting, revenue theory and admission, government budgeting, so yes, they're all related to government finance.
And, and by, it says completed and passed. Are we talking a D minus, or what are you going to get here? I'd like to see, you know, the honor roll here.
Well, I would do my best to, to get on the honor roll, Councilman.
All right. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you all.
Item I is, item I is consider acceptance of change order number one from Gary Up Construction Incorporated in an amount of $64.40 from the CDBG Roerman Parker Proment Project, and approval of the final payment in the amount of $7,503.90. Mr. Hanson or Mr. Gorman?
I'll take care of it. Thank you, Mr. President. This is a credit, $64.40. We actually eliminated some sidewalk in that project, and we added some pavement markings, and that's the difference between those two.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Item J is consider acceptance of agreement for fire services between St. John Township, Lake County, Indiana, and the Town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a yearly contract that we have with the St. John Township, and it does include a 5% increase from last year. They also have these contracts with other municipalities in our area, St. John and Dyer, and it is for the same amount. And Kathy LaRue, our St. John Township trustees here tonight, if you have any questions, or Kathy, if you want to make any comments?
No, I think what Jim said, it is exactly the same. It's a 5% increase. It was board-approved. It's, and I'm just going to add, as a town, you guys are great to work with, and I mean that sincerely. Chief Patterson is, you know, to work with as well, and so anyway.
Way better than St. John and Dyer, is what you're saying?
I'm just going to leave it like that. But anyway, but it is. And so I think, you know, it's a great partnership, and I appreciate, like, Chief Patterson did this food drive for us, and they really filled our food pantry monetarily and with food. And so anyway, it's a good partnership, and, you know, if you have any questions, just let me know.
Thanks, Kathy. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion. I did want to make one comment, Kathy. We appreciate the open door that we've always had with your office. You treat us really good, and we're glad, we're glad to be partners with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
I'll second that.
We, we have a motion on the floor, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item K is consider adoption of the town of Sherewell Capital Improvement Plan for twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four. Mr. Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a report that is generated by our financial advisors, London Witty, every two years, and it helps us track our, where we're at with all of our revenues within our TIF district revenues and debt accounts. And it's updated every two years, so looking for your approval tonight on that.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman.
I have questions, I guess. And I don't know if maybe this is something that has to be directed to London Witty. Why in twenty twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty is the...
Why are we in the red?
Why are we in the red?
It's because a lot of this money's gonna be spent out of the Kennedy Avenue. Yeah, exactly. I think most of this, and I also included, as you can see, the Oak Street at fifteen. I don't, not sure that's ever gonna happen, but I'm not really sure. Yeah, Kennedy's gonna be taking up most of that money we have in the TIF. And it's just a projection. It's like, you know, we don't know what our tax, what taxes are gonna be coming in, if tax rate could change. I mean, there's all kinds of things we need to look at.
All right.
We don't have to, we don't have to submit this report. It's just a gauge.
We're adopting this as a plan, but it's subject to, next year, we're gonna, we're gonna adjust it based on revenues, based on the plan changing potentially, Kennedy Avenue being pushed back another half a year, a year, prices go up on things, so, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That being said, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item L, appoint the Little Calumet River Basin Development Commission Advisory Board Member. Mr. Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. This is a Little Calumet River Basin Advisory Board Member is someone who attends all the meetings. They report back to our staff. We do have grants through the Little Cal, and we have projects going on right now where we're looking for funding. They actually just funded one of ours, eighty percent of it. We had to pay the other twenty. Should be starting soon, and I don't know if you guys had anybody in mind, but I know Jeff Hewitt showed some interest in that, and he does, he does go to the meetings. He currently goes to our Lake County Drainage Board meetings. He's heavily involved in NERC, he knows how the grants work, so I think he'd be a good fit.
Our current advisory board member is?
Eric Wolverton.
Did we reach out to Mr. Wolverton?
We have not.
Is this something that has to be appointed today?
No, you guys can defer it.
I mean, I don't know if it, maybe it behooves us to at least talk to our current member and find out if he's interested in staying on or if we're displeased with his performance or whatever, replace him, I guess. I just...
Mr. Gorman, when was our last appointment made? Do you know?
Twenty fourteen.
So this isn't, this isn't an annual or biannual appointment?
No, he's been the appointee since twenty fourteen.
And we just change it when we feel it's appropriate?
But we haven't talked to the gentleman, right?
No, we have not.
I think we need to do that out of courtesy.
Okay.
I think we should do that with anybody who's, you know, if we're changing board members or whatever, we should have the courtesy to let them know that there's a change and not just do it.
Sure enough.
I agree with that.
Motion to defer the appointment of the Little Calumet River Basin Development Commission Advisory Board Member.
Second.
We have a motion to defer and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero to defer. Item M is consider release of maintenance bond, surety in amount of three thousand, two hundred and six dollars and ninety-two cents and authorize, in suance of the certificate of release of Southland subdivision. Mr. Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Southland subdivision is located on Hart Farm Road, just off of US forty-one, on the other, on the north side of the bridge, across from Lacaretta Restaurant. They did some water improvements, and they're completed, and we will take those water improvements into our inventory. They also, we need to pave that road this year, and they also contributed some funding to us to pave that road. So certificate of release is appropriate.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item N is consider the release of a maintenance surety in local letter of credit in the amount of two hundred and six thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-seven cents and authorize insurance of the certificate of release for the Amber Lay Estates, Phase One. Mr. Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. This is similar to the one above. It's a subdivision in Amber Lay. All the public improvements were completed, inspected, roads were inspected, so this will become our inventory and release is appropriate for that project. It's only Phase One.
Question, Mr. President. Is, this is only for public improvements. Do they also have surety and bond for their residential construction? And if they have problems with their residential construction, do those claims go to a different surety? Is that how that works?
You know, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that, but I could find out and report back. I don't...
I don't want to release something that the residents might still need.
No, this is only utilities. It's ten percent of what the total cost of utility installation is. Right.
All right.
I think that would be, anything to do with the home would be with the builder and not, the town would not be associated with that at all.
Okay.
And Mr. Gorman and Mr. Hanson and Mr. Nandorf, you'll be working with them to make sure that they complete the Phase Two part sometime this spring?
Yeah.
Okay.
I apologize. Mr. President, Dave, do you have, Mr. Austin, do you have any comment on that difference between the sureties for public utilities versus the private residences?
I do. The public's the public. Jim is exactly right in that last explanation he gave you. The private side of it is between the private parties, private owners, private interests.
The builder and the purchaser.
Whoever it is. It could be, it could be more than just the builder. It could be subs, et cetera.
All right. I just have, we've seen these a couple times, and it just dawned on me. I don't want to release something that might be detrimental to our residents, so...
In supplement to that, however, the power of the permit vested in your building department is the axe and the sword to compliance with building standards.
True. All right. Thank you. There wasn't a pending motion yet. We just discussed it, right? Motion to approve then.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Item O, consider acceptance of donations for five hundred and forty dollars and zero cents. Mr. Troxel, would you be happy enough to read those for...
Would be happy. These are donations to be accepted in the month of December. We received three donations. First donation is to the Police and Fire nine eleven memorial, and it was an anonymous donation of twenty dollars. A donation to the police canine, protecting canine heroes, NFP Limited, donated five hundred dollars. And we received to our police equipment fund another anonymous donation of twenty dollars. Total monetary donations, five hundred and forty dollars for the month of December.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Troxel. Next item, business from the floor. Is there any business from the floor? Please step up to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Martha Nelson. I live at twenty-nine thirty-two Liberty Drive, Crown Point, Indiana, Burgess State subdivision. Oh, I'm sorry. Never got it one of these. Okay, sorry about that. We have a concern about the utility pole directly on Liberty Drive. We have contacted the town since the beginning of October. We have contacted NIPSco, and it's just, the pole doesn't have the consistency. NIPSco's trying to say it could be a sensor light. The town is trying to tell me it could be a sensor light, but nobody seems to be able to resolve the problem. So this started end of September, where we noticed the light across the street from our property. Polls down on Liberty go on in the sequence of their order. When it's dusk, they come on, and they go off when it becomes light in the morning. Our pole doesn't come on. The light will come on, like last, no, last night it didn't come on, tonight it hasn't come on, and some days it'll go eight days with no light on the street for security. We have contacted, like I said, the town. The town tells me it's NIPSco. NIPSco tells me it's the town. We just keep going back and forth. I finally got one employee from NIPSco to contact us back and said that they were checking into it. She said we'll send a truck out in twenty-four hours to resolve the problem. They came out and tagged everything. I spoke to one of the gentlemen who was in the truck tagging, and at that time, they said that they are unable to find the problem. So it's been since the end of September. Thanksgiving, we had no light again. We just have a pattern of no lights. It's a security issue in our area. It's a very dark spot across the street from our property, and we're getting a lot of traffic. People are walking dogs, and it's extremely dark there. So we're just trying to figure out how we can get a resolution to the problem, because you're talking since almost the end of September, and it's now mid-January, and we still don't have a resolution to why that pole will not stay on. Sometimes, like I said, it'll come on, but you might wait eight days in a row, and all of a sudden, magic happens, and it comes on, and it stays on and goes off, and then doesn't come on for a consistent amount of days. So there's something going on with the, whatever it is to the pole that won't provide the light that we need for security by the property down on Liberty Drive.
Thank you. Yeah, I, Mr. Hanson and I have been out there a couple times ourselves on that. I know, I know we've been getting calls, like you said, ever since back in October on that. Mr. Hanson, do you have any comments on that?
I've talked with the NIPSco foreman out there. He's been out there a couple times. There's multiple underground faults. They fixed a few of them, but I guess a couple of them, they need a different vector truck to hydroexcavate it.
Mm-hmm.
So if you want to give me your contact info, I can update you when I get a resolution from NIPSco.
Sure, because I spoke to someone yesterday from NIPSco, and she just said, we're gonna send another truck out today, and no one came. And then she said, give it another two weeks, but there's just no light. It's very dark in that spot.
Yeah, give me your contact info, and I'll get all NIPSco and find out what's going on.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very, thank you very much for coming up and letting us know. Any other business from the floor? Any further business from the floor? No business from the floor, this means adjourned. Have a good evening.